Okay, welcome everybody to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, March 6th, 2024. It is 6:03 PM. We're meeting virtually. We'll begin with a roll call. Planning and zoning commissioners, this is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Marcia Haydenfeld.
Brian Whitney.
Thanks. Malia Collins has an excuse absence. We're not sure about Mr. Dobson. Let's hear from Town Council.
Luanne Hook.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Marcia, go ahead.
Where's Kathleen?
Oh.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text her while we're talking.
Okay, great.
And since Craig's here, she can do YouTube.
Yeah, and she often does, but I think she likes to at least know what's going on.
Yep, you bet.
All right, we'll open it up opportunity for public comment. If anybody'd like to make a public comment up to three minutes in length, let us know. Once, go in twice. Okay. We'll close public comment for the night and start with approval of meeting minutes. So we'll start with February 7th. It was a regular meeting. Let me share my screen. Can y'all see it or is it going slow?
I can see it. It's going a little slow, but I can see it.
But, okay. It, so Marcia had a couple corrections in item two on discussions about dirt moving activities. She wants to just change the sentence to, "An idea for adding a sentence to the zoning code that dirt moving should not impact neighbors was suggested."
Just clarification of the sentence, that's all it was.
Any objections to that? No, okay. And then under item four, discussion of draft signed ordinance. Another clarification, Marcia changed the sentence to, "Suggested edits involve the possibility of reducing the speed limit on Highway 191." Any objections to that? Okay, and then, Item seven, discussion and vote on approval of letter to send to UDOT. Marcia clarified the final sentences in the draft submitted to planning and zoning and that planning and zoning will submit that letter. Any objections?
Nope.
Okay, and then under eight, transition to building permit, online software, just a, like a grammatical change. Okay. Any other comments from folks?
I move to approve the minutes for February 7th as amended.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Motion approves with three votes. Thank you. Next, we will look at the draft minutes from February 15th. This was our special meeting to vote to recommend the sign ordinance to the Town Council. Scrolling down, I don't see any comments on here. Any, any comments or changes to these?
No, I, there was some. Yeah, I don't remember what I thought. I move to approve the minutes for February 15th as presented.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Brian, Brian, did you say aye?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't really, I missed the button.
Okay.
Bumby fingers.
Now that we're approved, I do see a typo that's particularly cute, and that is on new business number three. Amanda voted aye, yeah, instead of no.
Leave that in there then.
Yeah, I kinda like it. Sorry.
Okay, well, motion approved with three yeses. Thanks, everybody. Um, okay. Moving on to the old business section of the agenda, number one update from Town Council. Luanne, we'd love to hear from you.
Alrighty, thank you. So we've had some meetings since, the last time I gave you an update was February 7th, and you've had some work sessions and whatnot. But we had a work session on February 12th that was all about the EPA grant for the old school. February 13th, we had a work session with strategic planning with the new members and with, you know, generally where we're headed that way. February 13th, we had a regular one, and again on the 20th, and then again last night. So, summing up all of those, over at the old school, the EPA grant is still working its way through. That's that million dollar grant, $200,000, supposed to go to UDB. And then they report what they spend their portion on in this EPA town to government, anyway, that, that interesting grant that involves the nonprofit. We have a, a meeting next Tuesday from nine to one with them, a joint work session with the board and with our Town Council. And we'll work out those agreements. We have to get everything all set before we can sign off on the EPA grant. So that's coming right up. Let's see, they're gonna be looking at a new name of the old school. The other one was never really officially done. They just sort of started calling it the CCC. And it's a little cumbersome with all the other Cs and Cs and co-ops and whatnot in town. So that was something that UDB brought forward too. So that might be in the works. Maybe, you know, I wasn't at that meeting last night, so I didn't get to comment, but I would think it might be a good town contest sort of thing, or, you know, something like that. But, and then it's Sitla, with Sitla, I'm sure everybody's aware that the governor pulled the whole Bears Ears with Sitla exchange. The thing that affects us here in town is the two pieces down here on the river bottom are not gonna get exchanged out right now. Those are the two that were within our town boundaries, and then up on top, that's not getting affected either. They are considering what they call a vertical bridge up by natural bridges. It's was proposed at 460 feet, but that's, you know, out of our town limits, but definitely in our, our area. The food bank is, you know, renter at community center, that it's a pro bono renter, but they are there, they had an open house, the work's all finished, so they could move everything in. USDA inspected it, and they're open and, and good for the Tuesdays. It's an emergency pantry thing, so they're just open one day a week. Bluff Water Works, Gary Lichtenstein was approved to do some strategic planning with them, and their next meeting is March 13th. The last meeting, not yesterday, but the one before, when Amanda came, it was a smaller group of us, Linda and Ann were both missing. And we decided to do the sign ordinance last night, and somewhere along the line that got pulled from the agenda. So we did not review it at all last night. March 22nd is kind of just FYI, there's gonna be a drill at the elementary school, big fire drill. So it'll be like the last one where it's all the deputies, all the, all of the agencies from the whole region. So you'll see a lot of lights inside and lots of police presence and stuff on this drill, and that's the 22nd. There's a lockbox on the community center, so the fire department can get in, and there'll be a key right there so that you can just know the combination and be able to get in. There's a Moab to Monument Valley flag for towns for the, the movies. It's 75 years of Moab to Monument Valley movie kind of like promotion. They would be, they offered 25 flags per town to hang around, so part of the concern was where would we hang them? And then again, they're flags, so it would need to work out with the sign ordinance. And then there's concern for the Bears Ears Marathon, it's coming up in November. Safety in Cow Canyon, but they're, you know, they use, they just come down the canyon and then have their finish line at the old school. You know, I had to think that if we had our trail up the canyon, they could be safely beside the road, and they wouldn't have to divert it and close it and whatnot. But that, that is a concern. They want to get the highway diverted for that hour or two. And that was all I had for notes that I thought you might be interested in. It's out of the regular administrative things, but are there any questions? Marcia?
Um, Luanne, would you just clarify, or Amanda and Luanne? When Amanda presented you the sign code ordinance that we're working on, is it presented to you for her to review with you, or did she do that? I'm just, where are we in the process?
Yeah, that meeting, the, the, what would that been, the 20th, February 20th? We, Amanda came and we tried to set a date to let her come and present. So we all agreed the 5th, but that didn't happen, and, and Amanda's probably had conversation with Ann, but anyway, that, that hasn't happened. So we haven't been briefed on it. We haven't voted on it. We have done nothing on it.
Okay, okay. I just wanna get in a comment at some period to the Town Council, and just wanna make sure I'm still in the process.
Yeah, no, it, it, nothing has happened since you guys signed it off and sent it, other than, you know, we've all read it and whatnot, but nothing, nothing official.
I, I was not on the agenda yesterday, so I just confirmed with people, with Erin and Ann, that I will present at 3:30 next Tuesday. During the, I think you, you all have like a full day of work sessions, so I'll present for maybe a couple of minutes about our, our intentions behind the different changes and everything. So that's next Tuesday at 3:30.
But not the regular, not during the regular meeting?
No.
Well, the, the work session's pretty packed already.
That's, yeah, that's the time Ann and Erin told me yesterday, so that's all I know.
And it might be, you know, the, the UDB meeting just turned up, well, maybe they decided that yesterday, but anyway, okay, well, we'll see. We'll see how it firms up as it gets closer.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you. Let's move on to item two under old business. This is an update from our contract with Hanson Group on updating our subdivision ordinance to be, to come into compliance with the new state laws. One of the Hanson members is scheduled to attend virtually our meeting on April 17th. We will just need to review that subdivision code review that they sent us, but as far as I know, I've asked them, I don't know if there's anything else you need to prepare for that. So that's the update there. Any questions on that? Good. All right, item three, update on the draft sign ordinance as that was sent to Town Council. I think that was already addressed. Any questions on that? I guess I would add that the, we have still not heard back from the town attorney on the enforcement section of that. So I will ping him, I'll ping him again before I present to Town Council next Tuesday. Okay.
I would just say quickly that I apologize for adding another business into town that will have a sign that says CCC on it. The Cow Canyon Coffee. I'm, I'm sorry to add to the mess of the CCC signs.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I was just interjecting a joke.
Yeah, no, I remember telling Kate that when she was proposing sign names. I said, you'll have another, you'll have competition with all the Cs, but.
I know, I just couldn't get away from the idea.
Yeah. Uh, wonderful, okay. Item four, RV ordinance. So this was a draft ordinance we've been working on for a while now that we kind of put, put on the back burner in our expedited attempt to finish the draft sign ordinance. So I just wanna hear from the commissioners, your thoughts on resuming work on the RV ordinance? If we should do that in a standalone work session, what, what feels good to you all? Marcia, go ahead.
Um, I think my comment would be, let's talk about our goals a little bit and put those in order. And that'll help us see where the RV fits in. I have to think that it's probably topmost, and it would be topmost because we've worked the hardest on it and don't want to lose the momentum. So I, I think once we're further down in the meeting to know kind of what we're working on in what order, then that'll tell us if we should, you know, do our final work session and hammer each other over the head till we get it right. So, because I, I know we really wanna put it forward at least, or put it aside if town isn't ready, for example, you know, that, but, but we're, we're so close, I would hate to lose the momentum.
Agreed, yeah. Brian, any thoughts from you on this?
Yeah, I'd agree that I would, I think it'd be good to look at the goals and situated in that, but also it would be great to hammer it out sooner rather than later, just because, like, like Marcia was saying, it's, we put a lot of work into it, and we are, we already had, I think the sign ordinance kind of punctuated our momentum. So it'd be good to return to it before it all just goes out my ears and to the ether.
Okay, I didn't want to say it that way where I'm old and I'll forget what we're doing, but that's kind of where I was going.
That's what, that's how I feel, and I don't even have, I'm, I'm apparently still young, but I still am forgetting where we were at on something, so.
Wonderful, okay. We'll figure that out after we work through our goals, then. Okay, moving on to new business number five, land use clearance applications. We don't have any for today's meeting. It sounds like we'll have at least one on the March 20th meeting for Deborah Horton, who is trying to put in her land use clearance payment tonight. So thank you, Marcia, for coordinating that. Any questions or comments from commissioners on land use clearances? Okay. Moving on, item six, new business, is the 2024 goals for planning and zoning, so. How about, how about this, Marcia? I'll share the 2023 goals first, and then we can look at the 2024 document. Apologies, folks, I sent the wrong one, but I think that helps us kind of see where we came, where, what we did last year, where we're going this year, so. Last year, we were, our big priorities were participating in the active transportation plan, participating in strategic planning, which then wrapped up updating the LUC ordinance for clarity. Don't believe we did that.
I thought we did.
We did? Was that last year? Maybe we did.
I think there was, yeah.
Okay. Yep. Getting more direction from the Town Council and Attorney on Enforcement. I don't think that we've done that yet, because I think that remains a priority. And then continue to work on the RV regulation, so.
I, I apologize for not catching the 2023 either and commenting on it, but my comments are actually kind of relevant to where we're going this time, so. But if you want to put the 24s up, that's great.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's my comment about, I, we've talked about this a few times. Some of the things we address sometimes are things that are happening around us, but don't necessarily fall to P and Z. So that's all I wrote there.
Yeah, yeah. It's important to use that filter of, is this a land use issue or not? Yeah. So I, so this is 2024. I put in here pending projects from 2023. RV ordinance, dirt moving ordinance, and enforcement issues. Any other pending projects I might be forgetting?
I don't think so, but I would take off dirt moving ordinance because I think we learned our lesson of working. We were addressing something we needed to figure out, and we figured out that it's more than we need. I believe that's where we stand.
Yeah, we didn't get a clear yes from the Town Council to work on it either.
Yeah, and that's a big one too, yeah.
There was something. Isn't there a new form we need?
Well, here's an example. The LUC form still doesn't say, by the way, give us your money. So that's what confused Ms. Horton, that she didn't remember, or that no one told her to get her fee in with the paperwork. So there was a drop in the ball there. So maybe what it is, is how about something like annual review of form, of submission forms? And that way, you know, we just go through and go, uh-oh, we didn't put the fee on this one, or we didn't put the enforcement on that one or something.
Mm-hmm, that's a good, that's a good idea. Um, I think there was, I think we needed a new sign form or something, once this is done, so.
If someone had, we need to add to a sign form that says if you're going, if in fact billboards pass, we're going to need an off-premise signature line for the landowner. So in other words, that's an update. Yes, good, yeah, there you go, update of forms, put it there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. This is the sign.
Yeah, that's a great way to put it, yep.
Okay, so great, yeah, let's, so thinking about 2024, without any order priority, project prioritization, we can do that next. We have so far finished the RV ordinance, have enforcement discussions with Town Council and Attorney, learn more about what the thinking is around Bluff taking over building permits from the county, what will be required, et cetera, and then annual review of forms. So I guess before we prioritize these, what else might be missing from this list?
I think that the, the subdivision ordinance, while we don't have to work it, we do have to work with them to work it. So subdivision ordinance mandated update, the state mandate we're following. We have someone do the work, but we'll have to know what's going on.
Correct, because that has to be done by December, I believe.
Right, right.
Great.
And then the only other thing I can think of is, it just flew out of my head. No, give me a minute. Go on. You, you go, Brian.
I'm, oh boy, I'm at a loss for other things.
That's because we're so efficient.
I know, well, the two of you are so, yeah.
We don't have to add more.
I know, I'm like, I'm not trying to create anything.
Yeah.
And part, yeah, and part of that, Brian, is what you said of that what's brought up to us too.
Right, yeah. Yeah, exactly. I mean, I assume there will be some things that end up on this list that we won't think of that will be suggested to us.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's talk about priorities. I'm gonna go ahead and say this building permits thing that can kind of be, I'm gonna put that as a last priority because that's sort of dependent on an external timeline. If that's okay with folks.
Guys, is that also a Town Council thing that would then be pushed? I mean, would it go through them first and then? Land with us, probably, right?
No, I think it actually goes through us first. In other words, if, if, if Kristen brings down information to set up a pattern, it'll start with P and Z having that pattern ready to give to town. Although, Brian, actually, good point, Erin or somebody would be involved in the train of it too, as to who's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be all of us.
Yeah, so we'll have to, there'll be some figuring to what the sort of flow for that is. But, but I do agree, it's, it's not our timeline to think about that.
Okay. Otherwise, between in this order of operations, any changes you want to see here?
I, I think enforcement has to, has to take a high priority, if not for, if not for a second, but maybe first. And that is because we can't seem to finish anything without finding out what we legally do about it. So let's find out what we legally do about it and then finish them.
Yeah, I think that's smart too, because, I mean, they sort of seem like concurrent priorities to me, but I do think that there is this sort of, without the conversations about enforcement, there's like, like, what's the point of another ordinance that doesn't have any teeth? So like, the RV ordinance kind of needs the enforcement figured out for it to really hold weight.
Agreed. And how about we bump the review of the forums to the top, to number two, just so that we know we've started the year with a review of what's on the website? That seems like a more of an administrative task that could take precedence over the RV one.
We could just kind of bring all the forums to a meeting and flip through them and, and see what needs updated and circle it so that we're ready for that next meeting with the corrections or something. Or, or work session if we have to, but I mean, it, it does seem fairly straightforward, and Erin hopefully would, would attend the meeting in some form as, as knowing which forms she, she updates, kind of thing.
Yeah. Okay. Might make sense too, if somebody just wants to review all of them.
Yeah.
But, I'll, what I'll do is I'll send this goals document out to the whole commission, since we're missing two commissioners, and then we'll next meeting, we can talk about the forums.
Okay.
Okay, any final thoughts on this?
No, I'm, I'm liking this. This looks, this looks doable.
Yeah, it's looking like a very manageable list at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, I would, I would make a motion to accept P and Z Commission's 2024 goals as presented.
I will second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the 2024 goals, say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Motion passes with three ayes. Thank you. Let me stop sharing. Okay. So, um, next on our agenda, item seven is a process for notifying both planning and zoning commissioners in the town about observed or reported enforcement issues. This is something Marcia and I have been discussing on and off for a while, comes back to the bigger enforcement question, of course, but for this particular matter, the question is, you know, if somebody is, if you're driving and you see a new sign and have questions about a sign permit, or if somebody's texting you photos of potential land use issues, what do we do in that situation? I wanted to propose like a, a more, uh, not a, not a formalized, like, I don't think we need to have like forums sort of process, but just one, one way that, in which we're all handling that the same way. So what I am suggesting is that any potential enforcement issues that we send any like photos, dates, relevant information via email to all commissioners and copy Ann and Erin. And so then we just have a, a virtual paper trail for any issues, then we can discuss them as a, as a commission. That way we're avoiding like texts or just verbal communication, but I think it'd be good to have a email, email chain go out to all commissioners. Marcia, go ahead.
Uh, just a question for clarification. Are we naming names or, or identifying? So if we say, I saw Susie put up a sign, do I say Susie, or do I say, is that, is that sign supposed to go up? Are, are we picking on people, or?
Well, I think you're giving, giving details, like the, the location of something, if you saw a person involved, the date, things like that.
Okay, so we are identifying, okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it sounds good. I like the idea of kind of having it be more collectively shared. Just formalizing a process for us all to be on the same page.
Yeah.
About those sorts of things, rather than eliminate some of the he's, he said, she said aspects of it. I like that.
And maybe when we talk to the attorney, he'll formalize the process further, but for now, I think this is a good, good way to proceed.
Yeah, I like that best. Get a little direction.
So it's good with you two. I will also email the commission about that. Actually, there'll be a lot to tell them after tonight's meeting, so I'll just make sure I catch up with Ed and Malia. Okay, any other comments or thoughts on this? Okay, any other comments or thoughts on this? Okay, um, moving on to item eight. So, um, this is an item that came from, um, Erin Nelson. It's, um, what planning and zoning, what we should do if we hear questions about road signs or street addresses? Because both of these questions have come to planning and zoning over the past few years. For clarification for us, for the public, if anybody needs their road sign replaced or updated on their streets, that goes to the roads department, which I believe is Anne, Luanne, and Michael Havick. Is that, uh, is that correct, Luanne?
Yep, that's right.
Okay, okay, great. Then, um, if, if you have any address questions, this is really critical. In the past, who knows, our addresses were assigned, county assigned them, electrical company assigned them, you assigned yourself. Now, any addresses need to go through the town manager through Erin. So anybody building on an, on an empty lot, looking for an address, needs to go through Erin. So, um, street signs, roads department, street addresses, Erin, any questions on that? So it doesn't have to come to planning and zoning, which is nice. All righty. Moving on, then item nine on our agenda. This also came from Erin and, so town manager Erin and then Anne, the mayor. Expired building permits and next. Thanks to the really great help of, of the new planning and zoning official, the county, Kristen Bushnell, we're learning that some building permits that are currently being operated under in bluff might be expired. Um, and so I'm actually not quite sure of the status of this agenda item. Like, I think we need to get a report from the Erin, but Marcia, go ahead.
Um, Erin and I talked a little bit and.
Great.
Yeah, basically what it comes down to is there are people building on things that were county-approved building permits from the wayback time machine. And I, I mean, we can, we can use an example of Hoyt building his, um, storage units that were approved before the town was a town, and he started them. And every time he comes back to bluff, he works on them a little bit. So that keeps it current according to Hoyt. But the question becomes, and, and I'm not saying Hoyt's right or wrong, that's not the point of this. That is how he keeps building, and that is how a couple of other things are going on in this town. So the question becomes, what does county building have to say about their permit system as to what is current and correct? And when does, in fact, that jump over to, hey, you're in town now and you haven't done this, so you haven't, you know? So we wanted to, Erin was saying, maybe a good idea is to find out through Kristin, who still has outstanding building permits with the county? Or anything else that began before town? And has anything been updated through the town? So it's mostly, I think the answer's going to be not much, if any. But just as soon as you say that, someone's building on something they worked on a long time ago. So that's where this came from, Amanda. I'm not sure how we'll answer. It, maybe this gets thrown in with the meeting with Kristin to, you know, with, with planning, county, county planning department meeting to tell us all of these things.
Marcia, was, yeah, well, was there a next step identified? Like, is planning and zoning taking the lead on this, is Erin?
No, you know what? I think, I think it was a, a little bit nebulous of, well, you should talk to planning and zoning and you should. So it might be a Amanda, Erin phone call that says, who's next? So, you know, that, the direction was find out what's out there in, in, uh, P and Z county land and make sure it corresponds with us.
Okay, I'll follow up with Erin. And if appropriate, if I can get it, I'll circulate a list of those permits to the commissioners. But I feel like it might take a little time to dig through all that.
It, it might on two counts. One is Kristin's overwhelmed, just trying to find a lot of stuff up there. So there may be some of that. And then the second thing is just the timing of saying, well, let me bring down what, what I find. So, yeah, I don't think this is tomorrow or anything. I, yeah, we'll just have to see what, what works, so.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Marcia, for filling us in on that. So, um, okay, that leads us kind of to the close of our agenda. Um, item ten, items for our next agenda, we know we'll have a land use clearance. What else would folks like to see on that next agenda?
Hey, good to maybe talk about scheduling of potential work sessions or something. I wouldn't mind talking about when people would be able to get back together. I think it'd be useful for, especially with like RV ordinance enforcement, just talk about those things. We seem to do well on work sessions with those types of things.
Agreed. Um, hopefully we'll have a sign ordinance update and, um, maybe building, outstanding building permits update.
Um, I just, maybe you will have had some sort of discussion with Kristin of what she wants us to do with her. In other words, maybe you're talking to her about some of these paperworks and other things. Maybe she could actually either attend a meeting or something like that to discuss with us. So maybe she, maybe an invitation extended to Kristin to come to a meeting and, and suggest what she needs from us.
Okay. Great, um, and then we could also, that meeting, maybe, uh, maybe I could put together a list of all of our forums and we can start with our 2024 forum review, just looking at that list. Um, maybe assign different things, so.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All righty, um, okay, item eleven, other, do we have any other from commissioners, Marcia?
I, yeah, I just have one quick thing in that it, it's going to, it's actually going to resolve itself in some of the discussions we just had. And that is a paperwork proper trail, so nothing gets missed like Erin got the, Erin received the Horton LUC request, then forgot to ask for a fee, but then I had it, so then I passed it, but you'd already talked to her. So I'm just suggesting we need a proper paperwork pad, uh, process.
PPP.
The PPP, the proper paperwork process, maybe that can be part of our agenda of just lining out. I just worry, because some comes into the office, which it should, that's righteous. Some comes through planning and zoning, um, emails, which is righteous. So I just want to make sure we all are on the same page.
Great. Well, I think too, when we update the LUC form, not only saying if, if he is required, but we can have a checkbox saying date fee was paid, so that'll help.
Cool.
All right, any other others? Okay, otherwise, I think we are wrapped up, we're, we're good for the evening.
All right, I will motion to adjourn the meeting.
And I will second.
All right, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Thanks, everybody, that was.
Thanks, everybody.
That was a great meeting, nice work.
Yeah.
So, my good night.
Have a good night, see you soon.
Your guests, bye.